Okay, all good.
Okay, so I'll call the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First item is roll call. It looks like everyone's present plus staff. And Jeff Davis. So we'll go to all businesses workshop first. Text amendment pre-application, the first item is short term rentals. Do you have anything to? You want to go over first, Jeff, or?
Um, yes, just a few things. I will attempt to share my screen. Just got my one screen today. It's always a little less than to be desired. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yep. Don't have a whole lots of slides today. But just want to do a little recap since it's been uh several months since we've talked about short term rentals. I just wanted to get everyone up to speed on the most recent changes and considerations. Uh, so as a reminder, the latest draft, uh which I believe is from the end of September, uh prohibits short term rentals in the WW zoning district. So that is a change. Um, and this is on top of where it was already prohibited in the IM, the IG, the GR and the GC. Uh, one of the things that we want to talk about tonight, uh Deb has mentioned that there are of course houses in the IM. Um, so is this something that you might want to consider allowing uh short term rentals in the IM? Uh, for example, on Hazel, Hazel Nut Hill Road, Route 117, etc. Uh, another change um in the most recent draft, uh per your direction as a body, uh the short term rentals would not require a special permit when located in the CN or CR zoning districts. So that change has been made. Uh, we also made the change that uh we are explicitly allowing only one STR per lot. You cannot have more than that. Uh, parking is still one spot per uh short term rental bedroom. That is not a change, but um per your direction, all that parking must be located on site. So that change was made. Uh likewise with lighting, if you recall, we had a discussion about where uh the town's requirements for um uh lighting standards uh would happen would would apply. And it seemed the general consensus was you were okay with it not applying uh when the short term rental is physically connected to the principal dwelling. So either it's part of the has a bedroom in the house or you know, it's an attached apartment. But if anything is a separate structure uh or um a standalone short term rental, uh then the lighting requirements would apply. Uh, also just wanted to remind everyone that uh the current text does have references to a town permit. Through uh, you know, a short term rental ordinance, uh that obviously the town has not passed yet. Uh, so we'll have to determine again how to juggle that uh given that the the town council is not um adopted anything related to this yet.
Yeah, well, the town council agreed. Or at least the mayor did agree that they would not take any action until we've completed our action.
Okay. Great. I was not aware of that. So hopefully that dialogue will continue. And then lastly, and what I see as being the major point of discussion this evening is really what happens to short term rentals in residential zoning districts. So in the latest draft, again from last September, uh we had said that short term rentals would only be allowed in the RSR and RU districts when the short term rental is either located in one unit of a two unit dwelling. Or basically is uh in the main dwelling or an accessory dwelling. Where there's a a permitted principal dwelling and uh the lots upon which the STR exists must have an owner occupant. Um, so again, either a accessory structure or one of a two unit dwelling and there must be an owner occupant. Uh, so I know that there had been particularly from how uh some some thoughts that maybe uh there would be other circumstances under which short term rentals would be appropriate or considered uh in a residential zoning district. I know as a group, we've gone back and forth between thinking, well, the demand for this is, you know, with walking distance of Mystic, for example, or other commercial areas uh where where you the environment is more walkable to things uh and you might want to be more lenient there, but other folks on the committee uh uh commission feel that that's exactly where you don't want to allow short term rentals, but you might be willing to again look at the IM district or perhaps in the RU district on lots of a particular size. So really, I think we're, I hope we're very close on this. Uh, and I know I don't know how you had uh some things that you wanted to uh pitch to the group. Or just take general thoughts on uh where we where we stand on this draft.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I had one thing when it's on the um on what you've laid out here, uh another situation where some people with a short term rental actually own the lot that butts the lot say that their houses and they may have a separate dwelling that they own in the lot next to it.
Okay.
And um it's just there's a few like that I know. So I just wanted to bring that up for the committee's consideration.
Okay, what I thought we could do is just go around the table. The non-existent table. Just see if anybody has any comments, including those any concerns with what's there or what what uh has to be covered or proposed. And see if we can reach agreement at the end. Whether we want to do it or not. Rather than try to answer each question because I think there are going to be a lot. So I'll I'll start with you, Hal.
Okay, well, actually. Sue actually touched, Sue actually just touched on something that was exactly what I was thinking of is that a lot of what we're trying to get to was having some good responsibility for these things. We're not that concerned if somebody is, if it's connected to someone's house because the owner's already there. So you just mentioned, what if they're next door? I completely agree. Then they're they're still right there. What if they're across the street? What if they're one house over? There's kind of that that's the kind of thing I would touch on is that there is a an absolute business model that has these houses that are there that we don't want corporate ownership. That's very clear. But we're okay if Sue, you said it's the person next door because they kind of live right there. If uh it's attached to it, then we're okay with that. And I'm just wondering if we can sort of stretch that definition somehow. We might not be able to do it exactly with just the zoning. It might have to go with back to town council to have the regulation that has that ownership model in there. But something that if if all we're shooting for is making sure we have very local responsibility for these things. I'd hate to flat out prohibit that entire part of the industry. That probably already exists. I think in your, in our the material we just got, you've got that model of how many whole houses are available for rental. Which is this incredible number, three quarters of them, it's the whole house that's available to be rented. You can be pretty sure there's there's people aren't living in them full time. If they live in them at all. And it's viable industry. If we want, if so long as we can control it. I think early on, we said we don't, we could came up with a whole list of where we're starting to come up with a whole list of requirements that would be imposed on people who want to have their run one of these things. And it makes more sense. It's true if they're local. So they have some direct responsibility. We say that that it's not too wise to just say it's everywhere in the entire town so long as they meet those regulations. Maybe it's wiser to actually have an area where we're saying these are the places where it can be. I'd be okay with that, that it would go with exactly what we said here. Except within a certain range of walking distance to Mystic, probably. Then you get this extra latitude. It can be the house next door. It can be the house across the street. You'll have that direct responsibility. I'm not sure exactly. I don't know if we can zone it that way, but it could be permitted so long as there's also another regulation that the town puts forth that has that co-ownership in mind. Well, by the way, I I I think I'm okay with it in the IM zone. It's 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 already okay for industrial. So it's seems like it's with conditions. It still should be perfectly okay. If you take a look at where that actually is. I think that might be so long as the conditions are good, no harm, no foul permitting it up in the then uh the IM zone.
Okay, anything else, huh?
Well, I have a question. Now Stonington just passed something that we just, I just caught the end of it. Now, was it that just they had to be owned by residents of Stonington? Is that their whole thing? Or did it have to be owner occupied? I didn't I didn't hear owner occupied in it. I heard resident.
When did this come about?
A couple days ago, a few days ago.
Oh.
Anywhere here this?
No.
It was in a town council meeting and they had someone from Stony that they're presenting what they were going forward with. And it sounded like they were just going forward with that. I just caught the end of it. It had to be a resident. It puts them someplace in town. I think we can be a little more strict strict than that, but we'd still get to where we want to go. We just don't, no corporate ownership. It's gotta be a resident or it's gotta be someone close by so that they're affected by whatever's going on there. I kind of like the idea, by the way, is that one thing that sort of helps is that since we're imposing a hundred percent of the parking being onsite, which I'm, I think I'm okay with. Is uh especially if it's as regards downtown Mystic that should own as long and we require it. It it was downtown Mystic, it alleviates the parking problem. People will drive there, they'll park onsite and then they're done with their cars. So this is actually something that's good for the parking situation downtown. Residents get to park on the street. So this is actually an improvement. So I don't want to have that as be a concern. I guess my, that's all I'd have to say.
Mike, did you have anything?
Oh, yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, let's see, where do I start? Let me just uh I the IM I'm fine with uh with uh like a just a little clarification. Um, because it does call for the IM. One of the uses in the IM is hotel. That's allowed in IM. So that seems reasonable. I guess it's just the um I would just caution that if that that's the direction that we're hoping that IM moves into. That's that's great. But if we're trying to get it more into a light industrial, heavier industrial look, then maybe it's a problem. But I for me right now, I would say, looking at this, it's good. I would welcome it there. I think it's probably a good place. It would benefit hospital and anyone else who's wanting to stay in those areas. When the word abutting in our definitions, uh it says uh that it shares a common property line and that it or a common border by a right of way alley or easement. So it could potentially be a budding and across the street. If we said a budding, that means also across the street. And I'm I'm just a little bit it would concern me that when we open up that can of worms, how far down the street it goes. And then you're up and then multiples of these, you know, if a person has one, then they have two or and pretty soon you're you may even be a local rotten person, but then you're operating. You know, I don't know, a lot of these things and and I think the whole thing is is that it's when it when it goes beyond what is residential. And that that at some point, you know, the the individual who owns eight, 10, 12 of them starts to look like a corporation. Probably is. But I just would caution as to how far, you know, once we start moving in that direction, how far we go. I don't know every everything else that I've seen on it. I'm I'm happy with the way that it is right now. And the only other thing I would say is the definition that we had in there, I would go with the state's definition. I think it's just uh uh makes for entirely more can, you know. It's especially considering that we don't have a definition from the town ordinance that's been approved at this point. That that's all. I I I'm happy with the way that it is for the most part.
All right. So.
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think overall um what we have the definitions and everything, we need to go back to the zoning regulations and check what we have against what we're allowing for bed and breakfast. And I think there are some real pluses in what we have already in the established zoning regulations. And there's some opportunities, of course, to tweak things too. Um, I will say that I think there's such differences if we decide to go to go ahead with what we have uh for short term rentals, we almost need to then take on bed and breakfast as a separate zoning item to um make sure they align. Um, for example, the definition of bed and breakfast says an owner occupied residential facility that is managed by the property owner and provides transient lodging to the general public without in-room cooking facilities. Right? So I think um I think the idea to put owner occupied at the first part of our definition would be extremely useful. Right now it's kind of buried um back in the um verbiage and it's it's not in the state or the um the draft town definition. So I think that should be changed. Then when you look at the table of permitted uses, if you look at what we're proposing for short term rentals versus what's in the regulations for bed and breakfast. I think there's, I think we have to decide if we're going to require a special permit, you know, SP slash C. Um, also for bed and breakfast because right now some of them are permitted where for short term rentals, we would need a special permit slash C, right? So as you go from um different zoning districts, um there's quite a difference there. And if that's something the commission wants, that's fine. But I think we ought to be aware that we're really, we have two different standards in some of these places. And it may be confusing to someone who's trying to comply by the rules, uh let alone enforce them. The things I had. Hey, I find it difficult. Uh, this is a problem I have with the definitions. Um, how can you rent a whole house and yet it be owner occupied? You know, um, it just, that's illogical to me. Because the owner can't even be in the attic or you wouldn't be renting the whole house. So I think we need to do something with the language on that. Let's see, what else do we have? I think the the main other thing, and this is um, I know what Hal was um saying about having them say next door or farther away. The only thing I would say practically speaking, um the cases that I've seen where it's an issue with having it uh another uh building and wanting to do a short term rental. So the person lives in one lot. The lot they want to, that they have the structure and they want to rent out. In every case, it's been next door. It has been adjacent to that property. And I would think that has got to be the vast majority of cases. Um, where people just had the opportunity to add another building for whatever reason and um so did it that way. Um, but nonetheless, um, maybe the commission wants to allow for something that's across the street. So those are all my comments. Thank you.
Okay, Steve.
Well, just thinking big picture. Um, uh, let me first get the IM zone I'm good with. Um, so uh I'll vote for that, yes. But um, big picture, I think everybody wants to prohibit corporations and exclusive uses of properties to be short term rentals. You know, can I get a thumbs up? Everybody agree with that? Just that um you know, I think that, you know, the whole um question about whether neighborhoods are being, you know, disbanded and just turning into short term rentals. I think that's what people are worried about. And if we put something in there, and I don't know exactly how, but put something in there that the primary use for the for the structure has to be as a residence of which a certain period of time, the person can rent it out as a short term rental. When you have houses that are dedicated towards short term rentals, that's a, that's a business. You know, that's that's not a resident anymore. That's a business. Hell, you know, LLCs owning business uh houses. I mean, it's in the sea corporation, you know, that's that's not a resident anymore to me. Um, so however you do it, and somebody mentioned that um uh the primary um use for the property, you know, is by the resident and then um you know, having again, as short term rental be as an accessory use or whatever you want to call it. Oh, you know, a part-time situation. That's fine. I think the owner occupied aspect of it is going to be tough to enforce by saying that, you know, I can rent out my house, but I have to live here also. So most of the ones that I know, it's like you rent a whole house. So I think that's going to be a tough sell to have it owner occupied, but resident owned and that they live there a certain period of time is something I would definitely endorse.
I will take this opportunity to just make one to remind everyone of one point that you recall, we're talking about um people who live in a house and like, let's say they leave over the summer and rent it out short term for a week or so. Uh, that is not a zoning issue. That is something the town needs to address. That is something that is going to be really important for a townwide uh short term rental ordinance. Uh, it's not something we're addressing in zoning. Uh, so we are talking about where you have a dedicated use. Uh, and so more often than not, for the situations we're talking about, it's not going to be a house on its own lot that is uses a short term rental full time, basically. Um, in let, well, not not in the residential districts, right?
Well, you contradicted yourself there. You said that it is, and then you said it's not.
What did I say?
I said in the beginning, you said that we're not talking about an owner who leaves the property. But I thought that's exactly what we are talking about.
Not within, not within the residential districts. Because right now we're saying if you're in the residential district, it's got to be owner occupied. So what we're talking about in the residential districts is you've got that flat over your garage or you're renting a room in your home. So right now, um, as we've got this written for the residential districts, um you know, you you that the owner has to be there. Uh, it has to be owner occupied. Um, now again, the issue of owner goes away and rents out the space that they normally live in. Uh, that's a not zoning issue. That's something that the town is going to have to cover with an ordinance. But in terms of a space that is set aside and dedicated for short term rental and a space that the primary owner occupants don't use for their own purposes. Is is what we're talking about for.
Jeff, can I just ask a question? So when you talk about, I mean, wh- what I'm understand, what I understand is that it's the owner can go away and rent their house out. But if they rent it out for less than thirty days, then it's a short term rent rental. That's different than if they go away for the winter and rent it to one individual person or family.
Yes.
And that's a long term rental.
Right.
It's that thirty days.
Yes.
And so I I guess it's just that for me, it's when, you know, these are residential areas. And I and I want to maintain that that the sense of security and uh neighborliness that exists in a neighborhood when people live in them rather than uh you know, renting them out week after week.
But but wait a minute, let me make sure I understand with the clarification that didn't clarify it. If in fact, I I leave my house for two weeks and rent it to somebody for one week. That's short term.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
But we can't zone against that is what.
Exactly.
We cannot zone against it.
Because that's an activity in that residential use, uh and it's not a use in of itself. And that's where you really, really need that townwide general ordinance for short term rentals to deal with issues like that.
So we just have to keep track of what things are ordinances that we want to make sure the town adopts.
Yes.
That will be different from things we can zone.
Exactly.
Still want to come up with it all, but we want to make sure they understand that.
And one other thing is the bed and breakfast, the length of stay is limited to twenty-one consecutive nights, just so you know.
No, because of.
Versus our thirty, so.
Yeah, that's a good point, Sue.
Yeah.
And it's rather arbitrary because in a lot of ways, they've not always, but in a lot of ways, they function very similarly and it would be good to have consistent regulations for both of them.
I think so. It'd be a lot easier on everybody.
Well, they should be, or they'll take you, somebody's going to take you to court and you'll.
Well, right.
That too, yes.
Okay.
Oh, and I'm okay with the industrial um owner talking about Hazel Nut Hill.
So I'm sorry, Steve. I feel like we cut you off.
Well. I I I guess I'm uh Jeff, by your definition, you're saying that because we put in owner occupied in residential areas, we're essentially um eliminating the aspect of an LLC.
An LLC.
Yes.
You could own the house. I mean, the house could be in the name of an LLC that you own or use.
I mean, I still think I give them what you're all saying. There's probably, and again, I think this fits better in the townwide ordinance, but we can attempt to put it in zoning. And see what your lawyers say. But uh, you know, I think we could have a blanket statement.
Technically in no hang and no hang, you know, pretty much that no short term rentals.
Right. But I think we can say, we can say a blanket statement that none of these can be corporately owned.
Well.
And whether they're located in the CN or the CR or the RS, just make that a blanket statement.
I don't think you can enforce an LLC to say you can't own it.
No, you can't. Yeah.
The LLC.
I don't think it's.
The LLC may be done for some other reasons.
Understood.
Owner may own the LLC.
Yes.
Yeah, and live there.
Yeah, but when.
That's why, that's why I stuck with owner occupancy for this draft. In the in the context of zoning, that is something that you can control.
But if if you lease it, you could lease uh the property and use it as a residence. And that should be, you have to allow that. I don't think you can say in the zoning regulations, who owns the property or has a title to the property.
Well, it's a residence. That's what we're, that's what.
As a use.
Correct. And that can be if someone who lives in it and rents it for a long period of time. And they have a lottery card.
Yeah, but Jeff.
Any other resident.
Jeff P, if we're Mr. Chairman, um, if a if a company, an LLC owns a property and continuously rents it in a short term rental capacity and never lives there, is is that, are you okay with that?
No, that's what I think we should, we're trying to say is we want owner occupancy.
Okay. Okay.
Gotta be owner occupied, I would say, and it's gotta be owner occupied. Well, I don't know how you, like it's.
I wanted to go over some rules, I thought that we should define what that means. But I was gonna wait till, till the end.
Yeah. Well, as long, as long as we're eliminating the fact that properties can, can, cannot continuously be rented. You know, even if it's on a, you know, twenty-nine and twenty-nine and twenty-nine, you know, if. Somebody gets under the gun every time and says, all right, I'm short-term rentals, but they do it. Essentially the entire year and a owner does not live there at all, um. Then a- as long as we're all unified against that, I'm good.
Yeah, it's just how you put the words, how you explain it.
No, that's it. I, for me, it's one, when. When you become a resident, that's what we, that's what I want to encourage. And homes and housing for residents. And when you are a short-term rental, you're a transient, right? So that's why.
That's what I think.
And that's what we're, that's what we're trying to. Try to, try to, you know, keep homes for people who live in Groton.
Right. Anything else, Steve?
No, I'm good.
Kevin, do you have any?
Do. I do. So the first thing I'm okay with, um, IM as, as we discussed there. Um, so the second thing, I'm gonna talk about two outliers to what we're talking about as well. Cause I know two situations that are like this. Out-of-state owners presume at least one of them is an LLC. And there is a living over a garage and a main house. Clearly not residents, right? But they, um, short-term rental, in one case, the whole house. And short-term rental, in the other case, you know, the accessory structure that's in there. Now, how are we defining them as residents? Frankly, I was very surprised when we asked for the legal representation for Groton, what a dwelling was. And I think this is some precision that we need as far as how that is defined, whether it's within zoning or within the ordinance. Because those people clearly are not here, clearly both of them rent out. But could they claim, I'm a resident, prove that I'm not a resident? What is the definition as far as that's concerned? So, um, that's point one on the outlier. And then the second one is, you know, you look at, um. Are the demographics of this area and the, and the geography. And I know at least one or two situations where people intend to short-term rental boats, right? So how are, how are, how are boats treated as far as this is concerned? I know in one downtown area that, you know, the intention is to put four to six short-term rentals as far as boats are concerned. Now, the people living next to those boats most likely aren't residents. Maybe I'm, my boat's nearby, I'm there for a night or whatever it may be, but. You know, how do we treat boats in that particular guard? Are we okay with that? As far as short-term rentals are concerned.
They're not.
Not zoned.
They're not zoning.
So right, so it'd have to be part of an or- ordinance, um. And then my third thing is just, I'm in agreement with, um, Sue in that, um, it appears as if, uh, bed and breakfast owner. It's much more difficult to run bed and breakfast than the, a short-term rental if we don't have that alignment. That we spoke about the twenty-one or days versus the thirty days, whatever that may be. But we can't make it harder for the people who have gone through the compliance in order to make that work. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I had just. Couple of thoughts. One on the definition, we should be using the, the state definition. Not the town one. Which, uh, has some holes in it. The state one is a clearer, clearer definition. And I think we should be defining, what do we mean by owner occupancy? And to me, it means that the property owner or leasing or a spouse. Has to be there for a s- a specified minimum number of hours per day, which I might say it might be ten hours. With six of those hours be continuous hours, so that it. It would not allow them to just come in for fifteen minutes every couple of hours. To say that he's, somebody has to be there that owns, owns the property or at least has an interest. In what's going on and on the property. And, uh, let's see. And that in order to, to understand. When the property is rented and when the owner is there, I think that requires the. The owner during the rental periods to maintain a log of what, when he's running. And when he's, he's present on the property, which would be subject to audit. Also that, uh, because there's no town or potentially there may not be a town permit. I would think we need some sort of, of identification to the zoning official that this. Property has a short-term rental permit or just a zoning, maybe it's a zoning permit. For use as a short-term rental. And that some of these are actually accessory buildings. I think the one like on nine nineteen London Road. They, so that you're there, you could have the owner in the house and a whole unit or dwelling unit. Rent it out as a separate, separate entity. Hmm?
Yep.
Yeah.
Which, which would be a perfectly good, good use. But I, I think that we should require they actually all be owner occupied as a minimum.
Yep.
And by owner occupied, you mean what exactly?
Is, that's what I wanted, I thought we should define. It's either the property owner or is, or the spouse of property owner. Or if he's a leasing for a long-term lease, like he's leasing a property, he would fall into that too. They have to be there for a certain minimum number of hours per day. That it is rented as a short-term rental. On site.
And I, I would, uh. Like, I guess I would just say that in order to maintain the property as a residential property. You would want to have a resident there.
Mm-hmm.
It seemed like. O- otherwise then it's not a residential property if it's under thirty days.
And it's short-term lease, it's really, it's a transient.
Yeah.
Rental, not a residential.
That's, that's when you trip that wire is when there's not a resident there. You want to maintain it, at least I do. I want to maintain it as a residential property.
I think just the title of a resident, of a residence says that somebody's permanently living there.
Well, so that's the question, right? What is that definition? An owner could be very different than a resident.
What's the dictionary say?
Actually, the, the zoning regs have a definition for owner.
No, but they don't. They don't define residents because they think the person speaks English. Yeah, but a dwelling unit is not a residence. It's just what you have. I mean, a residence has to have, it be a dwelling unit, but a dwelling unit doesn't have to be a residence.
Well, it does say any building or portion thereof which is designed or used exclusively for residential purposes. And containing one or more dwelling units.
Yeah.
Interestingly enough.
But it, but you, when you, when you quoted the, uh, transient logic. Well, that really clearly identifies that a temporary re- rental is a transient.
Right, right. Yep.
Right. So if I could just help, so say that you're, um, I own, I'm the principal owner of an LLC. That I say it's my house, right? Um, so I'm the owner, right? I'm not a resident, but I'm the owner. I could live in Vermont, right? But I qualify under the definition and we're talking about right now, not a resident, I am the owner, even if it's an LLC.
Yeah, in order to.
As the owner occupant.
All, that is ordered to rent it as a short-term rental. You've got to get your butt down in Connecticut. In the house.
It, Kevin, I, I think, um, at least for me, it's, and, and I, it's where you vote. It's where you get your mail. It, I think that the definition, when I looked it up for what resident is, it's where you expect to go at the end of the day. Kind of place.
I agree with resident, I just don't agree with the owner title, that's.
Well, oh, an LLC, remember, that's, that is just, uh, a legal.
It's a legal thing.
Thing. It's not. Yeah, and, and, and that's why also I was like a little concerned with this business of. Of the budding things, because when someone has, if you can have a budding or in town. And then, you know, then do you say if the LLC is registered in Groton, then that's okay? Uh, you start to get into these places where it, you know, I, and that's why I, I'm just a little bit hesitant to, to go there.
Very difficult to enforce if I was a zoning.
Well, and, and the thing is, yeah, no, and what I see right now, what we have is, is. In a simple form and probably manageable and I, and I just, I feel like. Maybe some of these things that we can't manage, we can hopefully get, uh, taken care of through an ordinance, but. I, I don't want to try to. Do everything through zoning we can.
Exactly, yeah, but I, I think there are a number, a lot of what you're talking about, like. If someone is required to get a town permit and they have to show proof of residency, this is something that. A lot of, uh, communities do for a variety of purposes. You have to like bring, you know, a few, uh, utility bills with your name, mind and that address. Or whatever else that you, you do to get, you know, proof, proof of this is my home, right? Uh, and again, I, that is not, that's not a zoning issue, uh, so I think, again, this is one of those things we. When you go back and say, all right, town council, we went as far as we could, here are issues that we're still concerned about. And in the permitting process, uh, you make sure that you're checking these boxes.
Hey Jeff, you mentioned that it's not a zoning thing, but I mean, there are people that own multiple houses. One that they live in and one that they maintain as a business.
Yep.
That's what I think is the, the tripping point.
Well, except the definition of owner in the zoning regs does say the person owning the fee simple title. Or all shareholders in a corporation, partners in a partnership or members of a limited liability company.
Yeah.
So, so theoretically you could be under many different, um, you can have a lot of properties be different things in every property.
Yeah.
But the key, the key term is occupant. You, you own the property and it is your residence, you, you're.
Or then, yeah, maybe you want to say resident occupied.
Hmm, that's what it really is, yeah.
I mean, that's what we're, that's what, at least what I'm trying to do is I want to maintain it as a resident.
That's right. That's what I want to do too.
Yep. Me too.
So we all agree that pretty much that is a, maybe the term resident occupied.
Well, cause again, we've already discussed this, a resident doesn't necessarily imply ownership. So someone could have, and maybe you're okay with this, if you have a long-term lease on a property and you're the resident, is that okay?
Yes, it is. It's not ownership, it, it's who has the right to use it as a resident. I, I just want to make sure, are we, are, I can't say we're agreeing, but are you saying that. In one fell swoop, we'll say, we're not going to allow whole houses to be rented out anymore. Because you can't have the guy living there when you rent out the whole house. Well, if you have an access, you can if you have an accessory building. If you have an accessory, but those are not the common place though. Yes, I actually. Used to rent a house where the landlady lived in the garage upstairs. It was wonderful. But that's not the common. The common is there's a house next to a house next to a house. So are we saying that a hundred percent of the houses that are there now? That get rented out for a week or two weeks or a month at a time, we want to render that non-compliant. That's correct.
Right.
Not sure I completely agree with that. It's something that we actually have and it hasn't been a big problem until it's become a problem. Yeah, but you're running a business, that's running a business in a residential unit and it's not a recognized use. For a business in a residential area. It's already there, but if you follow the rules and understand what the English language means. That's a transient logic. And that's not allowed. Except in, in the bread, I mean. Bed and breakfast situation. Where they really describe it, otherwise it's a hotel. The bed and breakfast, as Matt mentioned, it crosses that line. It's definitely a business. No, no, but they're defined, they're defined as that in turn. And what we have now is people running a bed and breakfast, but you don't get breakfast, you gotta cook it yourself. And, and that doesn't meet the same requirements. I mean, that's not too logical, is it? So if in fact we came up with something that just met all the same requirements, except that you don't get breakfast? I'm kind of, I'm kind of. Well, I mean, that's what you're saying these short-term rentals are. Yeah, I am. Really? Actually, you're paying probably more than what you are for a hotel room. Absolutely. Well, if you fill it up, sure. Well, I tried you for cleaning and all this.
I invite anybody to go on VRBO. I just did it right now, put in Mystic, Middle of May. And everything only got two hundred and fifty-seven hits. So that's two hundred and fifty-seven properties to offer, um, you know, the kind of accommodations. Some of our, some are whole houses, some are rooms.
Oh, in, in what was sent to us. Was that, uh, is it you, Jeff, who's connected, included that map? The data compiled by, there it is, and there you see how many are whole house. It's seventy-eight percent are single-family homes.
Mm-hmm.
Ninety-one percent, it's the entire house. Entire houses are what gets rented. So it's something that we really have a whole lot of, and we want to just flat out stop it rather than just limit it.
Right, so how much we had, how much we had, if they're ninety percent and there's two hundred, to say there's two hundred. And a hundred and eighty of those were bed and breakfasts, would we say that's okay? I don't think we would.
I don't think we would, but we haven't come up with the means of limiting it, and maybe that's what we need is the. That's what you need. Within this district, it's okay. It's already okay in commercial, so we're fine with that. Yeah, well, in order to change what's existing, then you're gonna have to have the ordinance, that's.
Well, and then we also need to change what residential is, because it isn't residential.
Oh, but I think we want to stop any new, we can do a stop new uses. If it's existing, then you have to go to the ordinance room. But if we put the rules out for what we want ongoing. Then you can base the ordinance on, on those rules. Or give them so much time to, to meet the requirements on an ordinance. I think no, didn't they just shut them down?
Yes, they did.
They did.
Yep, they did.
Yes, they did. And, and they've, I believe that they've been successful.
Mm-hmm. Well, for all I know.
No, they have except for one house right here. Hard to believe, but that's what they say, they claim.
They claim they were.
Interestingly enough, and you know, it, there's the other side, you know, that. What's happened to the real estate market because of these, everything and the shortage of housing here. You know, it's, it's an interesting thing and in no way, I didn't see a whole bunch of houses up for sale all of a sudden, so. It seemed to work itself out. It was kind of interesting.
Well, I, I, I would just, I mean, you, you can always rent it long-term. Or, you know, for the summer.
Yep.
Yeah.
Whatever it is that you want to do, that's fine, but it should. The, I, I just keep running into the zoning regulations, which say, I mean, no matter. How much I might like these things. Or I like them. I can't ignore the residential, uh, you know, it's just the rules, it's, uh, people have a right to live in the house in peace and quiet. And not have a hotel next door.
Right.
I mentioned before that, um, you know, there is a legal definition by the federal government, you know, where you're filing your taxes. You gotta live there six months or greater.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, can we leverage on that at all? And to say, you know, living in the house, you can call it, uh, six months or greater, you can call it your residence. And that's where you pay your taxes. All other houses are businesses.
Mm-hmm.
Or write-offs.
Well, the states, the states do that for income tax purposes.
Yeah.
They rule those rules because I know.
Every, everyone has one primary residence, right? And maybe you're, unless you're trying to bilk several states and, you know, dodge taxes. Everyone has a primary residence, and so. You can use that as your standard, that this has to be your primary residence. Um, I, again, in zoning, I don't want to be telling people in zoning that you have to physically be on your property for ten hours a day when. You have someone staying there, that's not a zoning issue. You want to work that out through.
But it's, what does owner occupancy mean? Then you have to.
Then you have to define it.
I think we just that you, this is your primary residence. Um, and that is, there's a difference between you, just because.
That's what I think.
You're chained there, you know, um, I think. This is your primary residence, and that's, that's as simple. As I think we, or as complicated as we need to.
But some people do have more than one. One house.
You have more than one residence, but you only have one primary residence.
Once you get to a hundred and eighty three days, you're there, right?
That's right.
But I only, I thought that that was normally only enforced for income tax purposes, like New York state go. And city goes after people, because I know people. That have a a place in Manhattan, this is an apartment. And a house in Killington. And they have to keep very careful records because they want to claim their Vermont property is.
That's right. That's right.
And New York goes after them, and they say they have to maintain a lot, very carefully maintain a lot. Of how many hours, how many days in each place. Yeah, they can see where you charge things, they can see, you know, phone calls where they are.
So I like primary residence.
I like it. I like that.
I think that's all we can do.
Yeah, you said.
Yeah, in zoning, that's about the best you can do.
Yeah, I can use that, what you really want, but that's the best we can do.
That is a pri- is a term then, primary residency.
It's it's six months and a day, and that's what you get.
So we want to use that as a de- we want to put that in as a definition of primary residency and just say. These short term rentals must comply or have. Be rented with a. Only in those places that are.
Your primary residence.
Primary residence.
And again, we're talking about in the residential zoning districts, just to reiterate.
I think it might be where I get the most heartburn, just because very early on, we were talking about doing an overlay. Um, zone, which would stretch the commercial districts to allow some of these things to happen. Which I still think I'm. That would make this more palatable to me, to say you still can have some where. It's, you know, across the street from the church, across up the street from the town where the. Commercial district just happens to stop because it, that's where it stopped in nineteen thirty, and so we left it stopped there. And maybe wants to be able to bleed a little bit to allow these things that are buffer areas to the residential areas.
Yeah, it's just, we, as we found in our mapping exercises. It's really difficult to. I mean, that's almost more of a mobile note when we see it, and we have a specific situation where, yeah, we could say this is cool. Uh, but to actually put down on paper a list of. Criteria, um, you know, there's always going to be that one, it's like, oh, well, it meets all the criteria, but oh, that just doesn't make sense here. Um, or the criteria end up excluding something that you think does make sense. I'm just like, I I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish, it's just really difficult to. Map it or um. Or have performance standards that are consistent to get, to get what everyone is comfortable with.
Why is it any different than any other business that are prohibited in? In residential areas?
Oh, it shouldn't be.
Business.
No, I I I don't think it is, but that's what I'm saying is that our delineation for where one. Where a commercial district stops. And where something else begins. We just have, there are lines around that we put in. And as towns evolve, as Mystic has evolved. Doesn't necessarily have to stay precisely the same for the rest of time, because that's what we had in nineteen forty. I think it has evolved a bit, and we should be able to tweak it some, now, we don't want stores to crawl all the way up. Route one, but. Would it hurt if you had one of these, we say hotels, whatever they are, to be up there? I don't think it would harm. That we, there's a couple of houses that we know would be perfectly okay if nobody lived there for six months out of the year. They don't feel, they have, nobody's lived there six months out of the year since we were born, they just, they weren't like that. So I don't think we need to try to enforce it, in fact, maybe we want to encourage it to get people to park on the site. Rather than park on the street. But it'll take a new line, we'll have to draw a new line, stretching out a few lots. Overwhelmingly, it's going to be where these things already exist. But not necessarily requiring someone to live there, because. They are sort of hotelish sorts of things, they just look like houses.
Well, then you've got to allow. Allow or lodging, transient lodging.
That's what I'm saying you would, because it's already there, and so allow it. And not necessarily make someone have to move in six months out of the year, because it's not really what anybody wants to do.
I I would fear that the thing that you're, that you start to to do and and what you see is. Around Pearl Street and Gravel Street is that. Very quickly, they become short term rental districts, they're not residential at all anymore. And people who live there then are being put out. Because the real estate values will reflect those uses, just like they would commercial or anything else, and that. Once you start, and I understand what you're talking about, how creep it happens, whatever it is, you know, a house that that it. It happens, but uh. It doesn't stop, it doesn't, uh, it's still residential and people. Want to live in residential areas that don't have businesses in them, and this is a business.
Yeah, but I I think you're you're thinking stretching more than I'm thinking, I'm I'm literally thinking in downtown Groton, downtown Mystic, going one or two lots. And I think it would stretch it out towards the southwest. Uh, towards a, on Noank Road, because. It's doesn't feel very residential until you start going up the hill. So take advantage of that and let it go up a little bit farther, but I'm talking just a little bit of a buffer area to have a place where these things would be.
I think that's a whole Pandora's box, or it's very difficult to be fair.
I don't want to be at that public hearing.
Then you're saying it's one residential districts anymore. Or are they?
Yeah.
No, I'm just saying I want to shrink the residential district by one or two lots in some places.
Well, that's a P O C D, you can put forth these big ideas, right, to change things like that. Right? Look forward.
You would get into the, into the, why did you pick my house, why did you pick the house next to mine? I don't want this, you know, I I think it would just, I, that might be something that we would want to do, but. Maybe at another, another, uh. Another time.
Another life.
But I think we we're really saying we want to have on owner occupancy of.
Yep.
Short term rentals, but.
In residential districts.
Yeah, residential districts, right.
Yep.
I'd like to.
Well, we said rested, resident. What what's the word that we're using?
You have to be your primary residence. It has, you have to be an owner occupant in your primary residence, um. If you're in a residential zoning district.
To run a short term run.
Yes. Now, let's go back to, and so I think then this. Has sort of killed Hal's uh original proposal that. Are we okay if this was? Adjacent, that you own, that you're you're the owner occupant of your primary residence and you've got a house next door.
The only time it's. Yeah, it would be acceptable as for when you have an accessory building. You'd have a free building that you could rent. He's just trying to get the people around me to be all short term rentals. Next year, I've got two, one is the full time, and the other one, it looks like they're doing it without owner occupancy. That the person comes. Looks like there's a short term rental, they only rent.
So I guess.
Oh, freezing off.
Yes, oh, go ahead. No, I wanted to go into, if we can, see if there are any issues left with the data center issues. Before we adjourn.
Do you mind if I just sum up, uh, so I can make a, so I understand my charge for making any changes?
Thank you.
So one, it sounds like everyone's comfortable allowing them in the IM, so we will make that change. Uh, it sounds like. The general standards we have now, uh, in this current draft for residential districts. People are generally comfortable with, obviously, there are a lot of other things that um will need to be. Covered by a townwide ordinance and a permit. Um. But we will add that uh owner occupancy means that this is your primary residence.
You got it, the definition has to be, use a state. Definitely.
Yes, yep, I've got that, we will use the state definition. And then I will, I will go ahead and look into um aligning. Your regulations for B and Bs and short term rentals, uh, again, looking at that thirty days instead of the twenty one days. Uh, and any other things where, again, we get in this weird. Space where we're talking about activities rather than uses, but I want to try to make sure that. B and B and S T R regulations are as aligned as possible, so I'll go back and do that as well.
Thirty days comes from the state, so you might want to use that.
I'm sorry.
Doesn't the thirty days come from the state?
Yes, oh yes, so we wouldn't be changing it to twenty one days, but vice versa, that if you're gonna allow short term rentals for less than thirty days, then the B and B would also be.
Thirty days, twenty eight to thirty.
Right. Yes, exactly, so that it's consistent with that thirty days.
Okay, and then the permit, we probably should, if the town council doesn't. Have a permit, they might, it might take them a year or more to get the thing, you might want to have something. To say we need a zoning permit or. Something for the short term run.
So I mean, Dev, that's.
Register, you don't think.
They're gonna have to get a building permit or a zoning permit anyway, right, is it, does that need to be specified?
That's right. That's right, I mean, in some, most cases, it'll be a special permit, um, and in others, it will be some sort of land use approval, probably an administrative site.
Oh, then that covers it.
Yep.
Yeah.
I thought they'd just sneak it in on on third shift.
I mean, I'm not, people will try to sneak these in, but uh, going through the process, you should be okay.
Right, okay, good.
All right, great, um, I should be able to turn that around this week, no problem.
Super.
Good. And then on debt, we have about twenty five minutes, we can talk about data. So that one, we have a time limit on, so.
Right, so I did not prepare. Slides, I think you all saw.
I don't know if we want to go over Mike's questions, or I don't, do we have anything else other than that? Well, I did on the definition.
Yeah, definition, yeah.
The definition, you go, cut off the end of the. End of the definition there.
Oh, was there the typo?
No, you, uh, you have a definition of a data center that was written for financial purposes. But it it. It reads about, uh, it says a facility that houses group of network computer services, and then. In dissemination of data. In information, it says pertaining to a particular business or classification or body of knowledge, that should go away. Because we don't care who owns it, what it is, all we care about is. They're moving electrons around through a labyrinth.
Okay. Okay.
Like somebody will sneak in, and if two, two businesses on the thing, then they can say, oh, you don't, you aren't controlling.
So the period after information. And the period comes after the word information.
Information, right.
Okay.
Because we don't care whether it's a particular business or not.
Yep. Well, yeah, that's what we said.
But. I don't know if we had anything else other than. What, uh. Mike was concerned with.
Oh, could I, could I address that, just, I'll just be brief if I could. Yeah, so I just, it was, it was, uh, I was actually looking at the short term rentals in the IM, when it, when I. Because I've been focusing on larger lots. And then, you know, with, because in the IM, and it's most, I don't have any concerns in the IG. I think we're fine there, it's just in the IM where you can have a lot. And they're mostly along Hazel Nut Hill Road, and we just said that you could put short term rentals in there. Uh, the minimum lot size is thirty thousand. Uh, feet, thirty thousand square feet on a lot. With forty percent coverage, so you could essentially put one of these twelve and a half thousand. Foot. Uh. Data centers on a thir- three quarters of an acre lot. And and it's in that area around Hazel Nut Hill, if we're gonna allow short term rentals in there, I'm thinking, why would we want to have a? Data center right next door to it, running twenty four hours a day, that seemed like. So that's why I said the three acre minimum lot size might be appropriate, and I don't know if we can do that, or if other people agree. But. Seemed like that was, uh. And it was mostly because we just. Did this stuff at the la- at the last meeting, and we really hadn't had time to think about it. And then what was the others there, the?
Would we really produce much noise in a small data center?
Well, I don't know, but if it it would, if it, I don't know how much noise it is, we never really talked about it at twelve and a half thousand feet.
Well, you still have, no, but you still have to meet the noise criteria for an industrial use.
Yeah, but not, it says in the, in the definition for the, I mean, in the noise, it said it excludes. Uh, budding properties in the IM or the IG district, so.
That's.
The person next door wouldn't be protected by Hal's uh noise ordinance.
No, no, there's, and the rules are there already for every other. Use for noise, this is just.
Yeah, I just, I I uh.
This is just an add on, unique to data centers.
Yeah, I think that Hal's. Hal's uh noise ordinance, what he proposed is excellent, it's our. Our existing one was just the state standards, I think is what it was.
Right.
Yeah, which, I don't know, I I and it's just in those small lots along Hazel Nut Hill Road that I saw.
Industrial building in there.
I know.
Likes twenty four hours a day. And meet those state standards, that's, that's more noise than what you get out of a data center.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how much noise comes out of these things, you know, a lot of this stuff is just me being, trying to be careful. But I just, I don't, I don't know how a twenty four hour a day operation. Uh. That could fit on a three quarter acre lot right next to a. I mean, in our definition, it says restaurants, hotels. Offices, and now short term rentals. So like, I don't know if that's where you want to have you, and those things are already allowed, and then we're allowing a new use in which may. And it's just on that one street, and I don't think there's too many other one acre lots, or or the ones along Hazel Nut Hill Road look like they were all in the two. The two and a half acres, well, that's why I picked three.
With with regard to the the either the noise or whatever else might be a problem, I think those are only a problem if you have to live there.
Hmm, it's a resident.
That's the difference, in fact, you're gonna, if you're gonna visit there for a week at a shot or two weeks at a shot. Well, you're not so bad, and if you don't like it, live so, then don't rent it again, so I I, for most of those things, it's strictly the problem is. Having to wake up every day for the rest of your life, next to whatever that is. Not being there, working, not eating there, not going to the doctor there, all those other things aren't a problem. Because you're not there for so much of your life, you get to go home to someplace quieter.
I just, I guess. Also, we could always um amend the noise piece, uh, to say that. It also, uh, you have to meet these noise standards when you're in IM or IG district and a budding or residential use.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but you're right next to ninety five there too.
Yeah.
That would make it easier to.
So it's got to. Having no more noise from the highway.
Just feel like we're tying ourselves in knots trying to allow a use that. I I and I think exit, like the existential question is, where do we want IM to go? Uh, more towards industry or more towards hotels, restaurants and and the likes of that. Because I don't know if, and and it's gonna happen regardless of what we think, that's what's gonna happen, that's, that. Use is gonna occur, you know, I think that we just had two hotels close recently. Uh, someone is gonna build another one somewhere, and this might be a place. Uh, closed, they were converted into apartments.
I think that's a longer term discussion about whether your IM, you want to eventually.
I know, I realize. It was a concern. Took me a long time to write this letter.
Want to keep talking.
But I think we can definitely make that. Change to. Change to the uh, noise piece so that, you know, protects existing residential uses within the industrial. Zones, I think that was a very good point. Um, you know, I think a lot of the. Noise issues occur again with these mega facilities that are acres and acres and acres, um. In size and have, uh, not only the the power generators, but the air conditioning units, I, you know, when we're we're dealing with. Something of a size that we're limiting this to, um, you just don't need all that infrastructure. It's basically a big room with. Computers. Um, so I think we are, by limiting the size to what we've limited it to, uh, you are significantly reducing. Um, the potential for some of those nuisance concerns. Uh, and also as a reminder, we based the twelve thousand five hundred square feet on what's already existing today. For some of your larger. Businesses, uh, so we did not want to make any of them not conforming, um. So that's where that wasn't an arbitrary number, it was based, you know, and again, we don't have a whole lot of data points. Um, but it was, it was based on. You know. What what we've heard from businesses, they already have.
Oh, that's, that's fine. I would just point out that it is in the city, though it's not ours, it's not our zoning.
That's fair.
And then the other thing that I had, uh. Mentioned in here was the, uh. Oh, the accessory use, I just want to make sure that we don't allow this and then we get multiple accessory buildings. Put on, I don't think that, I think, I don't think that. Like for a data center to have an accessory data center is what I'm thinking. Or multiple data, like what Kevin described with the tractor trailers.
Right, and. Didn't you address that, what you wrote up, or maybe what, um, Jeff P? Um, wasn't, I thought that we could not do multiple Jeff Davis, you may be able to address it, sorry. No, I think that's, that was the intent in in what is in this current draft and I think Jeff P, um. Had some good language, uh, regarding that, um.
Something about adjacent, wasn't it?
Exactly, um, but. So right, yes, it's the adjacency, so if you had an accessory. Use that was adjacent, then that would just make it part of the primary use, um. So I don't, I don't. Think there's actually a logical way we could get there, but if you just want, you know, to be doubly sure, we can very easily add that you can't have. An accessory data center be part of, be accessory to a data center. Um, but I I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but if it would make you comfortable, we can certainly add it.
Well, just discuss that as an outlier, so if someone put in what is a large tractor trailer. And it's that, I'm just picking or a small eight thousand square foot, couldn't they therefore put in another four, another four thousand? And. It doesn't hit the minimum requirements of that lot and the, they could say. And I thought we 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 we, you know, put, took this out. No, I have four different data centers and four of them are accessories, I only have, I only have one data center. And I have four accessories.
No, we also put the limit on the size of accessory, so it can't be more than that. I think we have a twenty percent.
Okay, the definition of uh, an accessory. Says a data center that is co-located with a permanent principal use where such facilities is accessory. And is in support of the principal facility use, so it means.
A data center couldn't fulfill that role for another data.
Because, no, cause it's, yeah, it's not an accessory.
Right.
To the principal use.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, I'm I'm glad, I just, I I was, uh. You know. Envisioning, uh. A hillside of accessory uses.
Yeah, on, on the utility notification. I'm not sure how I. That would work when it says. The utility demands can be met at the proposed location for the estimated life of the system. Cause the power company doesn't generate, or the power distribution company doesn't generate the power. So they can't say what's there. All they can do is put in. The uh, necessary fa- facilities to support. The projected use. So you probably don't want to put in estimated life.
That was added, missed everyone's request.
But I don't know how you could make that. No, I'm curious that, how can they have gotten utilities with supplying the power? They can put the cabling in to support it, but they can't say. I can guarantee generate the power generation for the next twenty years, what that's gonna be. I don't know how they would do that.
I don't either.
I mean, all that, we want to say is the power is available, that they have, can support it. Cause we're not allowing any onsite generation. Non-carbon type. Or internal combustion engines.
If they can't support it, that would be self-limiting then. They wouldn't be able to expand it, the use, they wouldn't be able to expand it because there's no power.
Right.
It's really solved itself versus before.
Cabling is, the cabling or the infra, the infrastructure is there.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, the ability to put it in, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, if the utility has a problem with this and says, I don't think we're gonna be able to do this, that, that's the bottom line, really.
Yeah. Well, we're talking infrastructure, I think, rather than that.
Well, these are small room now, they.
I don't see it as admission, but, but I mean, it says that we have to get an agreement from the power company. They might not be able to sign it.
Yeah, I think that could be a problem. We have to go up the corporate ladder to get twenty years. The answer is corporate exec won't sign that.
I would think. But they can sign it, they're gonna get, they're. They will provide the facility to get the power.
Yes, yeah, so you want to strike those words?
I will strike those words.
Yeah, I think so, because the utilities, all the utilities problems were when we had really big facilities. And then you were, I was concerned about the long term.
But with the way ever stores charges there, they don't want to use any power anyway.
Mystic champagne. Mystic champagne.
Yeah, making the electricity. Does anyone have anything else on data centers? So we, if not, we should be pretty close.
Breakless.
So we can lead our time.
Yeah, just, just one question about the, um. Noise. We use the term wave signature, that's a tough term. I don't know what, somebody's gonna try to match that.
You want a definition for it, Steve?
Well. I know a little bit about acoustics and I know that. I said I know a little bit about acoustics and I, and I think people are gonna have problems, the lawyers are gonna get involved with. You know, when we say. Must match wave signatures of the existing.
What do you term, you got another term, similar or?
So here's what my request would be for that. Deb, if you could run that language by whoever on your staff is in charge. Who will ultimately be being, be in charge of enforcing. This, um. And making sure that they're comfortable with it and they have a good understanding and feel that it's, it describes something that is. At least if not common knowledge for the average person, common knowledge for someone in this industry.
Sure, I can do that.
Or if we could just get a, something back from whoever that is. Telling us what they think it means.
I don't think this is as foggy as you might think. I mean, if you're gonna see my little thing here. There's the wave signature of our conversations. It's a cheap app, so it's, it's something that we can sort of match. Now, are you gonna match it identically? So they might have to some language, well, how far off can you be? But frankly, what the granularity of how you're going to match it. That might be open to discussion, to be able to come.
Why don't we just say DBA or DBB?
But you can't do that because that GDBA generalizes the entire thing.
And you say.
Can you say, you've got some nasty little spikes that make things really obnoxious, DBA won't pick those up.
Can you just say approximates the? The wave.
I think you probably could.
Maybe that, a term like that would be.
Now, you're down to what does, how approximate is approximate?
Hmm, well, then the engineer is gonna have to do a fast, fast talk to get it approved.
Yeah. Just cause approximate, pretty good is pretty good, you know, when it comes to that, but, but you can't just do a DBA because that's. The whole point of DBA is it is a profile. And it's just matching how loud it is compared to that profile. And it's just not gonna pick up any spikes.
Well, isn't this gonna be a special, are they special permit, aren't they?
Yes.
We had said that.
Well, there's special permit, yes.
I mean, is that something that we could say matches?
Yeah, but you can't do that until it's built.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, that's why I think you want to approximate it, not, that you may not be able to match it.
Or say that it must not exceed ambient noise levels without any, um. You know, signature or. I don't know, without annoying spikes is what I'm trying to say, but in better words.
Got any sound engineers, you know, Steve?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Are there, are there not regulation, are we inventing the? Wheel here?
No.
I mean, is there, I mean, I'm just wondering if there's not something somewhere in this world that somebody else is. Managing noise.
Oh, yes, there, I mean, that's where this all comes from. I don't, I certainly don't make it up myself. I'm not a sound engineer.
No, no, I don't, I'm not suggesting, I just wonder, like, we, did we, is that something that you were aware of, Hal? That matching the sound.
Those exact words I didn't come up with, I just.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah. In terms of the profile, no, I can come up with that, but I I completely agree with it.
Yeah, I was looking up other examples and sort of piece something together that seemed to match what you were trying to.
Yep.
Because now, you know, that the guy is gonna come to the property line with a machine similar to yours, it's your phone one. Maybe a little bit more sophisticated, and he's gonna do the exact same thing. He's gonna say, yeah, I'm sixty dB and blah, blah, blah.
Well, no, actually, because he can actually do the snapshot. Which is what he'd have to do, just do a little snapshot, say, here's what it was, because I can do.
And you know, it's never gonna be the same.
Oh, it just says approximately.
Well, you don't want it to exceed it.
No.
He's saying that the wave signature.
Wave signature has gone a very.
Yeah, no doubt. Yeah.
Yeah, it just has to approximate it.
And I think I have to understand is that we say the wave signature has to match, maybe that's the wrong words, that. No point of the way, wave signature can exceed maybe.
Yeah, that's it.
No point of the wave signature can exceed the existing wave signature, maybe that's it.
No, but the existing one may be different from day to day.
Well, we have that explained too, so that's several different sampling points.
Right.
And then all those different sampling points, that's where you have to go by, and that's the best you, that's the best you can do. So it's, it's true, it's exceeding, it's not matching, it's not exceeding any point in it.
I like that better.
And what, I don't, I, you have to understand where I'm coming from. If you averaged it all and you had a straight line. Then you could say match, but not, not a good idea.
No, no, that's, that's where averages don't work.
Okay, all right, that's why I prefaced it by saying I don't know anything about this stuff.
No, you shoot, you shoot one foot to the left of the duck and one shoot to the right of the duck. On the average, the duck is dead. No, it doesn't work.
Okay.
It's a frequency.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ducks, I understand.
Right, we're changing from match to shall not exceed.
Okay.
Points on, or however you want to say that.
Right.
All right, anybody have anything else? Cause we're approaching our. Finished time. No one has anything else in a. Entertained emotion for adjournment.
So Lou.
Second.
Hold in second. All right. So we should have, uh. Enough to keep you busy for a while, Jeff.
Yep, but again, I don't think these are, I don't think these are big lifts, uh, should be able to, I I would imagine. Turn both of these around this week and get you, get you some final drafts.
Great. Great. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you all.
Thank you everybody.
Good night.